I'd call a meeting to order, Jackson County Commission. This will be a joint meeting with a work session and then the regular commission meeting to follow. First, we'd like to have a roll call. Ms. Manning, if you would.
District one, Mr. Guffey. District two, Mr. Bimble.
Present.
District three, Ms. Gilbert.
Present.
District four, Mr. Seuss.
Present.
Chairman also present.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Before we go to the indication, I'd like to make notes that Mr. Tim Guffey's absence today, his father passed away before the weekend. And for information, it's Clarence Edward Guffey. He'll be at the Lane Funeral Home, 601 Highland Terrace, Chattanooga, Tennessee. Visitation will be 11:00 a.m. until noon on Tuesday, June the 12th. The funeral service to follow at noon at the funeral home. Very well will be at the Chattanooga National Cemetery at 1:30.
And that's Eastern time?
Eastern time. Now we'll have the indication by Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's all pray together. God, Father, we're blessed. We count blessings every day, but right now, we pray a special blessing and a special prayer for Tim Guffey and his family and loss of his father. We just pray for peace and comfort for that family in the passing of Mr. Guffey. So, God, we pray for them. We pray for all of those that are represented here, those that work so hard to serve the people of Jackson County. We pray for them and their families, that they'll continue to strive diligently to be the best servants that they can for this county, continue to watch over us and guide us every day in Christ's name. Amen.
Now, Ms. Gilbert, we give you the list in the place.
Let it lead us to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have to approve the agenda for the meeting on June 11th. This is today. I would like to make one minor adjustment to it on the work session number nine. We will make a discussion pavilion at County Park. Do we have a motion to approve today's agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. We have no awards presentations and we have no public comments from citizens today. We'll start with the work session and we will discuss the DHR lease agreement. As we know, that the DHR lease is going to be up, I believe, at the end of July and we discuss another agreement. Now, thank you, Porter, you've been in contact with somebody with a statement?
I did. I started talking to the, close to the deputy director's office of DHR and they passed me on to the Assistant Attorney General. He handles all of the real estate acquisitions and leases for state departments. I've talked to him two or three times, one time being this morning, and he's, quote, "working on talking to the deputy director about an extension of a lease." We don't have anything yet, but we are, we did make contact, we're in discussions, we just don't have anything.
Nothing.
Yeah. So, we don't even have an answer from them that they, quote, "absolutely want another lease." I think to do, and he thinks to do, they don't know any reason not to, but he doesn't have that final say-so from the department yet that they want to extend the lease. Once they do that, then we can discuss terms, I think.
Am I correct in my memory that this has been a five-year lease in the past and it's been renewed three times?
I believe that's correct.
It was, it was a 15-year lease to start with. The original term was 15 years because that was the amount of bond. So, it ran for that and then there's been two five-year extensions, so it's 25 years. And so, what, what the lawyer down there and I talked about was another five-year lease with another five-year option, which would be 10 more years. But that, that's not set in stone, that's just something we discussed as being a possibility.
You talk per square foot cost?
We did not talk, we did not talk anything about compensation.
So, if this move-
He didn't, he didn't have that authority and I told him I didn't either.
If he goes past this July deadline, he does understand it won't automatically renew, but that would come to a agreement.
Right. Yep. That's why we're trying to get it done before July 31st.
I did check with the, the, Mac and appraisal in there, estimate on the square foot he's priced, anywhere from $5, $10 square foot.
Mac and appraisal.
And I think, Ms. Manning and myself had discussed this, most of the time, the property owner in leases like this handle the grounds, the roof, and the heating and air.
That's correct.
And then in this agreement that we're currently under, the DHR handles those three things, so. Looking, after we hear back from them, we can sort of determine the square foot of price that will be factored into it.
Did he give you any idea?
No. He said, again, he said he didn't have the authority to discuss price or even terms. He was just trying to get contact with the director.
Correct.
And he's not been able to do that yet.
Are they looking at any kind of timeframe that he talked?
He thought probably sometime next week. He expected to be able to talk to him today, but just said not today.
Okay, next, we discuss the, to provide volunteer contributions for school resource officers. I think this is something that Mr. Bimble has been working on.
Yeah, and we had discussed this briefly in a previous meeting. Mr. Porter said before you could start, you kind of put that kind of framework together, you needed a, you know, kind of a list of what we wanted to do. I just made this up, I want to do bottom and look and see if any of this needs to be adjusted or if the commission's in agreement that this is the way we need to move forward, but I thought there should be at least three board members. I figured the county commission appoint one board member, the sheriff's department appoint a board member, and the school board, Jackson County School Board appoint a member. Four-year terms, we'll set up a separate fund and it would be the county, we would maintain that's the fund, you know, we'd make the deposits and cut checks. Could only be spent for resource officers and school safety, direct cost of school safety. The board, we make recommendations. The first line, August 1st would be the cutoff date, so anything collected before August 1st would be put on the following school's calendar year. You know, I figured we needed some footnote on how to disperse or do away with it if, you know, you know, it didn't become productive and we wanted to do away with it, so I might put that number six on there. You know, we could dissolve the board, close the account and the board members would have the final say on the remaining dollars that they're working. Just give you enough to-
Does. Now, explain what you said this was going to be brought through, right? Was it the garbage?
Well, donations can come from anywhere. Well, I was trying to get it done before July the 1st because that's when our quarterly mailing goes out for solid waste and we were going to put a letter in, that's the only mailing that we do, so we were going to put that in, you know, but, I mean, it could come from anywhere. If the school board wanted to put out a call, the sheriff's department, if they sell test or permits, if they wanted to ask, pick what they wanted to donate at that time, any way we wanted to go about raising funds.
I just knew you mentioned that right there and I saw one, I didn't know if we even talked one. There, oh, man, if we was going to do that.
See, we already got a letter ready to monitor things and put in the letter.
It's just, let's share the volunteer, right? It's just all volunteers, so it's not anything mandatory on the bill.
Would this be in a separate account? Would it be in a separate account or be put in a-
It would have to be put in a separate account.
Any other discussion?
And you said that's enough for you to work with, Mr. Porter?
I think I can get something drafted that will cover this and then we'd have more discussion about it. I think the commission will, and Bob can help out here, the commission will have to maintain absolute final control of the fund. The board would really be an advisory board. Otherwise, the only way out of doing it would be either special legislation or some, some other way to set up another board. I think we, the commission can create an advisory board about anything, but they won't do, and that's, that's the way I see this.
It'd be very similar to what the fire department is saying, yeah, same Mount Leck.
Right. So, yeah, I think I can put something together with this.
Next, excuse me, next, we want to discuss the coroner's expense allowance. Now, Ms. Manning, is this something that you have?
Yes, sir. This, this was just something that one of the auditors, auditors had made a mention of in the past. They was, when they were just looking back on exactly when this started, it was many, many years ago, they just didn't have anything on the file. They said the commission had a right to allocate that expense allowance. They just didn't find anything in their records that it was, was done. And mentioned that we should just simply discuss that in a work session and approve that, that way we haven't been going late. Now, what, I talked to several people about it, but we've been doing this for many years and the way they're doing it, the two, there's two deputy coroners, they get $103 a month to help in their administration of their duties. And then the chief deputy coroner gets $128.75. Odd numbers, but that's what's been paid for many years, so that's the amounts that we're currently paying monthly to.
And then when they go out, they get mileage on top of that?
That's correct. They'll keep track. If they have to go for miles or anything like that, they'll turn in a log with the miles of, you know, going through the drum.
So, we need to make a, like a motion to adopt the coroner's expense allowance?
Yeah, I would say we do it in a work session, discuss if anybody's got any questions and then in the meeting, we would just approve that current expenditure allowance that's being given right now.
It's currently coming out of what number on our books? Where's it currently come from? It's budgeted in or out?
Comes out of the coroner's fund.
Okay, so it's budgeted in?
And it is budgeted already and we, we budget that same amount every year. So, it is a budgeted expenditure already. It is already in there, so. I told her, I told the auditor, I said, "Well, we could just discuss it in, you know, discuss it in the work session and if the commission would go ahead and approve that." Then she said that would be fine for their records and that the commission, you know, just, when it was set up back years ago, they just, the state auditor just didn't have any records to back it up, so. And they look at things like that occasionally during the years. I know with five years I've been here, that's never even been questioned, but they, we've been paying the same amount ever since I've been here, so.
He said, "Okay, well, the commission, if we go ahead and vote on this, on this meeting tonight, we'll, we'll put that number five." Next, we'll discuss the advertising for the EDA board appointment. I think that one of the members said on the EDA board's time will be up the end of, in July.
It's our appointment?
Yes, it is. We want to advertise for this position like we have been doing the other boards.
What we've been doing. Two weeks advertisement would put us at the next regular-
Work session.
Work to, on, on the regular session.
The regular session.
So, hold off on advertising until after the next work session?
If we go ahead and advertise now, it would give us two weeks to the next regular meeting. We'll get the word and vote on it.
But we want what timeframe, because that's what we got into before.
Well, I think it's the end of July, I would guess.
No, but like the advertisement, like we want us to get them by Friday so we can look over them between there and the meeting on Monday, and that way we don't just come in here and there's another one they turn in at 4:30, right, right, 4:25-
Well, we'll have-
-before we sit down.
We'll have more extra time because we'll have a whole month of July. We want to just-
Okay, so we're not going to vote on it that day?
Well, can't. I'm just saying, if we push for time, we've got extra time.
I like your idea, Melinda said if it pops up right then, we have a little-
We can just go ahead.
Advertising.
I'd advertise now.
Yes.
And then close the advertising in two weeks and then we, I feel like we'll have a list and whatever, after we get a list.
And then along that same line, on number five, discuss advertising for Cumberland Mountain Water Fire Protection Board appointment. They had one member on that board that passed away, so there is a vacancy there. We have had one person turn in, his wishes to be on that board. We'll go ahead and advertise for that one too.
Just advertise together?
That's what we've been doing for all of them, we're going to advertise for everybody.
Right. We'll go to number six, this, we note this is a fourth of July holiday and just bringing this up is, is during this time, I wasn't here during the last fourth of July, is there any extra time given for employees during this?
It's Wednesday. What date is that?
Oh, no, Wednesday.
It was on Wednesday this time.
So, that's sure that we did that on Tuesday?
If it fell on Tuesday or Thursday, we gave an extra day, but.
If it went on Wednesday, that kind of puts it down the middle, just leave it that day I guess, would I say?
Any other discussion?
We've lived through it, probably on a Wednesday before, do you remember what was that?
We've always extended it on Monday or Friday because people were out of town for the holiday or whatever, they could have a long weekend, but.
So, we've always given an extra day, just to extend the weekend. If we do anything, then we could do four or five, but then they have to come back to work on Friday.
Yeah.
Not everybody.
I knew that was coming. A lot of people are going to be sick on the 6th. Yeah, you have point there, man.
At least I have one more meeting.
Start, so we've got another meeting before I'm-
Yeah, yeah. We should just this up a little earlier.
Well, we can-
We can put it to the next one, which will be the 25th?
Yeah, we'll put this on the next work session.
25th? Yes, sir.
Put this to the next work session.
Well, the work session will be on the 18th.
Okay, we'll put it on the next meeting, I'm sorry. I had my months mixed up there.
Unless that's the case.
Okay, next, number seven, this is to discuss joint lawn care maintenance agreement with the City of Scottsboro and the Jackson County Commission for the Veterans Memorial Park. Let me explain this a little bit. The Veterans Memorial Park that they're doing down there on Veterans Drive, I think what they call it, or Halo Drive now, us and City of Scottsboro have been doing a mowing and the, and the, the veterans sort of wanted something in writing saying that us and the city would continue doing the mow. We've been doing it anyway. We went down there the last time to mow, it'd already been mowed by the city, so, and then one of the city council members wanted something in writing that we were going to do it, continue to do it. They were afraid of the change in administration and we would quit mowing it anyway. That's, that's all it is.
Who does it for us? What do you should maintenance on?
Can we just do an MOU? Really, the City of Scottsboro doesn't have anything as far as us mowing it, we, we just go down there and mow it. Can we just do an MOU to the veterans group? Take care of that, you know? City really doesn't have to have anything because it's not their property that we're on. We could just tell them, we giving them an MOU and if they want to do the same, they can for the veterans park. It's not much, it's not much mowing. That's how it factory with everybody?
Their property's owned by the, the FDA?
Yes. And then we'll, this up at the next work session, have one sort of drawn up and we'll sign it and get the veterans people to sign it.
Whatever that's done, it needs to indicate that it's, provides a public service.
Right, right. Next, number eight, it's consider request to set a public hearing to vacate a portion of County Road 96.
This is up at the, new development up at the Google Plant, this is the main, however many TDA it is, it's not very many TDA County Road 96, it's just a little spur there that they want to vacate so that there will no longer be County Road in that project, it'll be gone. And that's part of this, you know, there's, putting in this new big entrance and that's part of this project.
There's no property on the road there?
No, they, they own it all, they have bought it all. Whatever, what all TDA did not own, Wyzer Enterprises has purchased.
Are they going to be responsible for all these clubs and colleges and things?
They, yeah, that's part of our agreement on the industrial access project, which is really a part of that, yeah. They paid the, the bond fees and the 40 thousand dollars, so, yeah.
Yeah, I just don't think the taxpayer should be out anything, that's for their benefit.
In the end, it will be the taxpayer's benefit because we won't ruin that road.
Yeah, but it could cost us a lot, you know?
Yeah.
For example.
First, no Jacksons, we will move forward this on, like the commission. Number nine, discuss the pavilion at County Park. Ms. Barnes?
I think, I never did hear about Carmelo, the guy with the guy that bid on it time before last and he said he could do it for the same price, so I think they have the same price there.
I, I thought, I don't know why, he didn't, he called me last Tuesday and he said he had his insurance stuff in.
I just dropped the phone with him before the meeting and he said that he could do it for that price.
And, uh, he wanted to know about, that was Chambers, he wanted to know what to do with it. I said, "Just send it on to him." He said, "Well, I've been holding up because Strickland Insurance hadn't been held up on some things, but we changed over." And I said, "Well, they're waiting on you." And then when Carl told me this, I said, "I don't know." I said, "I talked to, I told them we didn't have no meeting last week, but we had a, had a holiday." And he said, "Well, he'd just get it, get it to you." Kind of shocked when he said that.
We definitely didn't get something done in there because he didn't have no shade and, so.
Things got tricky now.
These, these people have the permits, everything they need.
He's going to work through TDA now.
Okay, and when will they be able to start?
He can start probably sometime this week.
Any more discussion?
I agree with Tim, with Jason, excuse me.
He's the same company that built our shop area, County New Shop, the same person that built our store building down there. So, he's done a lot of work for us.
This one?
He does, yes, he does, he does real good work in, you know, in the town of Miami.
$200 or so different?
Uh, 64, I think, Mr. Bimble, but, uh, 68, 80, 89, 68, 80.
Almost five hundred dollars.
Okay, do you want any more discussion concerning this? Do we want to move forward, put this on the tonight's meeting, the vote on?
I do. It's been, it's been all summer, two months.
Yeah, move forward. Because they need it, they need the majority of the campers for us, especially by fourth of July, it's going to be packed down there, so they need something.
They should have it by now.
Okay, that concludes everything on the work session. First thing we have is some old business. You will notice on the agenda, a motion to approve minutes from April 2nd, 2018 meeting has received. Motion to approve minutes from April 9th, 2018 meeting has received, and motion to approve minutes from April 16th, 2018 meeting has received. Do I have a motion to approve these as, as received?
I'd make a motion, combine them together, approval.
And we have a motion, do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. We have a motion, motions to set a public hearing on July 23rd, 2018, at 4:30 p.m. on the application of Wyzer Enterprises to vacate a portion of County Road 96 and give notice of such hearing as required by law.
Make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Have a motion to, to concur with a DECA and award the lowest bidder for the contracting part of the Wondville Water Project Phase Two.
I make the motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion to approve the joint lawn care maintenance agreement with the City of Scottsboro and the County Commission for the Veterans Memorial Park. I think we'll have to wait till we actually get that drawn up, so I ask, I ask that we table that to the next time.
I make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
To the 23rd?
Yes, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion to approve the hiring committee's selection for the vacant motor vehicle acquisition in the Tag Office.
I make the motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Next, we want to approve the deputy coroner's expense allowance.
Make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Next, we have a motion to move forward with the, with the quote that we have been given today for the pavilion at County Park.
Make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. That seems to be everything on today's agenda with, with staff. Mr. Chief, do you have anything to add?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Manning?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes, sir, four things. Um, just want to provide some updates, public works projects that are going on. Federal aid resourcing County Road 63 near Woodville. The resourcing project is complete except for striping, more than a legend, so if that work remained, that will be all complete. County Road 92, bridge demolition near Hinton. It's bridge reconstruction replacement, basically. The demo will likely wrap up this week. It started and we look forward to complete on demo. County Road 42, federal aid resourcing project near Fackler's. That's scheduled to let the end of this month, so 6/29/18. And then the concrete pavement project, that's in four different locations throughout the county that's going to be funded through the seven material tax. The previous meeting was held this morning, we will solicit bids July 2nd, so we look forward to presenting those, you guys, and bills for that. That's all?
Okay, sounds good. Ms. Barnes? Now, from commission staff, Ms. Gilbert?
I think we need to start planning budget meetings, maybe start getting that in order and set for definitely in July. Anybody disagree? Everybody good with that?
Matter of fact, I've just sent a letter today, sent out by all departments. We, we discussed starting a little earlier this year and moving a little quicker into it and not waiting to the last minute. If there's anything that comes up that we're needing to wait on some information on, we can do that, but most of the departments, we can go ahead and get moving on the budgets and get those done a little quicker.
Last meeting.
Yeah.
And we had some adjustments right before.
And we even started in July.
So, the letter be going out tomorrow to all department heads.
So the letter be going out tomorrow to all department heads, just as Mr. Skipper had mentioned, so we will be moving on.
That's all, sir.
Mr. Seas, do you have anything to add?
I'd just like to commend Johnson for the work on 63 that he spoke about. Has some phone calls and then have been some positive things, so that's good to use.
I would say some as well.
Right, and I'd like to welcome the young lady with the sentinel here, Jackson County with us, part of meetings.
Ms. Campbell? Mr. Porter, didn't mean to leave you out, do you have anything?
I have nothing, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one thing?
Yes, sir.
There's an issue over here on the south side parking where, I know it's a city's issue, they're going to have to do either some signage or something. Because people keep parking in the exit.
Amen.
And it's been several days, we've had to go try to find people and wait till they get done doing their shopping or whatever, and it's really-
It's over here in front of?
Where they exit out of the inter, inside of the square.
Okay. And when they go out, they sort of in front of the bake shop?
They're parallel parking right there. I walked in the other day.
And I've even had complaints about people that are parking in the old parking spot, which doesn't quite block the thing, but you can't see around and there's going to be an accident there. I don't know if the city can do some signage or-
I'll speak to the mayor about that and.
Do some painting maybe, some parking.
This concludes everything on today's work session and commission meeting, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Meeting adjourned.
Since the pavilion's contract has been approved, can you release the financial amount, monetary amount on that?
68, 89, 29. Thank you, sir.
Do you have the agenda?